All right, I show it's 5:30, July 24th, 2023 council meeting. We'll start with roll call.
Harman.
President.
Buska?
Yes.
Fortune?
Here.
McConnell?
Here.
Crainer?
Yes.
Next is the consent agenda, and that includes the approval of the agenda, approval of the claims, approval of minutes from July 10 through 2023, approval of Class B retail alcohol license to Quick Trip Inc., DBA Quick Star number 428, approval of application for tax abatement under the Urban Revitalization Plan for Prime Management and Development LLC. And the last thing, approval of application of tax abatement under the Urban Revitalization Plan for Jeremiah Heeter.
So moved. Saka?
Buska?
Yes.
Crainer?
Yes.
McConnell?
Yes.
Fortune?
Yes.
Harman?
Yes.
Next is Public Works.
Just an update on the projects happening now. They are in Phase Two of the downtown project. They should finish up the concrete portion of Phase One this week. And I believe they're going to start the saw cutting of Phase Three tomorrow, which Phase Three is from North Park Place up to Third Avenue or in front of the County Store. Then the Seventh Street project, they finished up the digging portion of the retention basin except for the tile that needs to go on the bottom. Then they started laying storm sewer this morning, and they are still hoping to get the Highway Nine crossings done while the DOT detour is in place. I've heard anywhere from August 4th to October is when that bridge will be opening, but I think it's ahead of schedule, so let's hope to get that portion done. Then the street department started that storm sewer project today on Second Avenue. They did close the street down, and they will do that every day, but we'll open it back up at the end of the working day. And we have a pre-construction meeting scheduled for August 2nd for the water tower project. And as I reported last week, or last meeting, they do plan on starting August 14th on that. I'll let you know if anything changes after that meeting. But then ahead, Dean, our street supervisor, look for semi truck traffic signs. Is that something we still want to go through with for Sixth Avenue and Seventh Street? Do we want to put a truck route in and not allow that traffic down Seventh Street after it's finished? Because if so, I need to get with the DOT and come up with a plan for signage and everything else for that Seventh Street.
I think it would be in our best interest to have a dedicated truck route coming in on the west side of town and keep the semi traffic off of these residential streets, especially Sixth. You can't, you know, we've, I've got pictures, and we've all seen it semis trying to turn, go north, go south there. They're eating out the backside of the curb, you know, their tires are running up on it. And if we don't have something in place when Seventh Street is shut down, I envision these guys trying to come in on Second. And I know we got three axle, or three ton axle limits on some of the streets farther up, but...
They'll use any street to go down it.
What's that?
They'll use any street to go down there.
Right, that's why I'm saying if we can get a designated truck route now while Seventh Street's closed, maybe, and again, I'm going to have to go with the DOT and come up with a plan for signage and everything, which is no big deal, but I just want to make sure that that was something we felt we wanted to go through with.
As long as it doesn't shift on to, you know, some other street.
Correct.
It's less able to take it than Seventh is.
Yep.
It'd be the purpose of dedicating a route out on the Calvary Cemetery Road there and coming in on that.
And go back out.
Yep.
Yeah, because we currently have a few signs that we could put back up on Sixth Avenue that say no truck traffic.
Yep.
So that's something that we could get put back up relatively quickly.
We know we're going to have some with the county shop, with the sale barn.
Right, yeah.
With the construction company.
Correct.
You know, you're probably thirty-plus semis a day running down that, on that Seventh Street right now, going to Donaldson's in Fethalade. And there's no reason that, you know, most towns have dedicated truck routes going into their industrial parks. So does this take a measure or what?
What's that?
Does this take the motion?
I don't think so, no. I think it's just something if you guys want to go through it, that then I'll proceed a little bit more with the DOT and coming up with the plan.
I think we should.
Okay.
Will that eliminate some of the traffic that's on the Granger Road?
It should, especially if you put those no truck traffic signs up on Sixth Avenue again.
Because I noticed a bunch of them when they turn there, too.
Right. Yep, it's just not a wide enough intersection, so.
It should eliminate some of it.
Right.
Okay.
Does the DOT have to bless anything, or do they just, you just tell them here's what we're doing?
Right, and then they'll help you set them where signs need to go and come up with a plan, so.
One of the things that I would check on the DOT, if they're going to be involved, is how, how do we enforce that in the city? I mean, our officers, if we catch a semi on a closed road, I mean, obviously, warning or something's going to have to be written.
Well, a lot of times, too, what you can do is when there's new signage, especially like that, you can actually contact the Department of Transportation and see if they have a motor vehicle enforcement car that can dedicate some time to maybe being in that area, because that word will travel fast.
Right. I think we've got a golden opportunity with Seventh Street going to be going down, and we might as well get it in place now, so that when, when everything opens up and it's in their head, because most of these guys are route drivers going to the same place, so.
Okay, so ahead.
Thank you.
Yep, okay. Next, police report.
I have no report at this time.
No report, okay. Administration.
Last week, I was at Clark School down in Ames. The auditors are here this week. We're currently working on a budget amendment to incorporate some of the projects that weren't done this year and then the big projects we're working on. And Anthony Sturm is our new deputy clerk. He'll be starting this Wednesday.
Last, under staff reports, committee updates. Anybody?
No update yet.
Nope, okay. Any comments from the audience on that this portion is, comments that are not related to anything on the agenda? Jason?
Since Jan didn't want to give her full update.
Uh-oh.
We'll meet us tomorrow.
You, you looked. So real quick, just roll through some of it. It is the end of July. August is going to be real busy. So for the audience, for you guys, council, and for everybody watching at home, August starts off with a bang and a flying breakfast, August 6th, that's Sunday. So always appreciate the partnership. We did put a little sign out there for the couple trailers that are parked out there. They should be in and out of that area hopefully within a couple weeks. So we're, we're less than two weeks out from flying breakfast, so I hope to see everybody out there.
Whose land is that, that they've parked the trucks on? Is that ours?
The city's.
And we know who they are, right?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Okay, he does, because I don't. That's why I throw a sign out there, and that's worked out really well.
It does, okay.
They'll take them out by that Saturday beforehand. And we'll be out there Saturday morning setting a tent, setting the tent up and doing all that jazz, so.
Yep, and I did let the construction company know that that is coming up, and we'll need that space, so.
Okay, sounds good. Yeah, like you said, hopefully a lot of it's already in the ground.
Right.
You may use, so. We follow that up with, that's on Sunday. Then on Tuesday is Family Fun Night, National Night Out, the circus night out of the fairgrounds. So that's Tuesday at eight. So bring the whole family out. There'll be food trucks, there'll be all kinds of good stuff. Police Department is partnering on National Night Out. A huge shout out to Officer Godman. He's been a huge help on that. And then Kulanus, our host in the circus. And then we do the Family Fun Night, so that's all on that one. For you all here, if you would like to be a part, we do this every year, but that Friday, the 11th, we will host a new teacher luncheon. So I do invite the council, if you want to join us to meet the new teachers that are coming into the district. Right now, I think we're staring at ten or eleven where that's at. That's kind of what it has been the last five years. Always been close to a dozen. We just do a luncheon at the theater, so thanks to Wendy for letting us go down there. We're able to tour upstairs with the new teachers, let them know the cool thing we have at the theater, and then do a quick little meal, and then just kind of, kind of welcome them and give them a little goody bag and stuff like that. So if you would like to be a part of that, let me know. And then, as we talked about last month with the approvals, Harvest Fest is coming the end of August. Lots of cool things being planned. Our posters will start hitting the, hitting the media here real quick. So Friday night, Saturday night, Sunday, full weekend, so that's all I got. Thanks.
Anybody else? All right, we'll move on to the normal business for tonight. Number one, Dylan Armstead with Community and Economic Development Association to present proposal for comprehensive plan update.
So he is actually not here tonight. He is sick today, so he's not able to attend. At this point, with the housing, the rural housing grant, we think we should hold off a little bit longer because there are some communities that are using the rural housing assessment grant to pay for some of the comp plan. So until we hear back or, and apply and everything, I think we should hold off a little bit.
Any questions or thoughts on that?
He didn't give you a date.
I'm sorry?
He didn't give you a date.
For coming back? I don't believe he gave me a date, no.
Okay. All right, well, number two then, discuss the rural housing assessment grant program.
So there is a webinar that they had last week. It's about twenty minutes, it's not too terribly long, that talks about how to apply, what's needed and whatnot. August 31st is the deadline, 30th, to apply. When I was down at Clark School, I did talk to the lady from ISU who houses, who does all of this stuff, and she gave a whole list of different things that cities are using for it. At this point, I think the housing committee should get together and discuss it. They do recommend having seven to 10 people on the housing committee other than just city staff as well.
So who else does it besides Amy and myself? Jason?
Yeah, we have an established housing committee here, right? We have realtors, developers, bankers. Always looking for more, but that's who usually comes to our housing meetings. So we were going to do that, add you in, Amy already comes, Pat from the supervisors comes. So we kind of already got that established, and yeah, I mean.
Do you have any meetings upcoming?
Yeah, we have them quarterly.
Quarterly?
Yeah. We've already talked about the grant, so they're willing to move forward with it. Have you talked to Brenda? Is that who you talked to?
I talked to Sarah.
Sarah, okay. Brenda Martin's been the ISU serious contact that we've been working with, so.
Can I have a visit? Do you know what day it is? I don't have it until September 21st. We might want to meet before then. So we can talk about it afterwards.
Yeah, we can. If we need to, we can, but, you know, we do need to get awarded the grant. You guys authorized this last meeting to go ahead and write for that thing and move forward with it and put up the match money that hopefully we get back ten grand with a $2,500 match, so.
So the next step, would you wait then until the grant is given?
Kind of around that.
Yep, yep, yep. Okay. Anything else on?
Before we do, Nikki had an interesting list of what cities are using it for.
Oh. I'm sorry, six of them are using it for comprehensive plans, to update those. Citywide cleanup, nuisance housing, legal services. Those are the big ones that other cities are using it for.
Comprehensive plan.
I know citywide cleanup, I mean, we get calls on that all the time.
Not bad either.
Right.
Because we haven't had that in the budget for a couple of years, I don't think, right?
I think it was prior to COVID, so probably four years.
We'll have to discuss that again when we do our budgets this fall, because I've had people ask me about it, too, and figure out what it's going to cost and what to do with the leftover TVs and stuff like that, so.
And one thing they did say with the webinar is you don't have to go into your application with, I know how I want to apply and what I'm going to apply for. You don't need your great idea when you apply. You can do that after you go through the whole assessment program with Iowa State.
Okay. Anything else on that? Next, number three, discuss IEDA Community Catalyst Grant Award for the Theater Scene Shop. Jason, do you or Wendy or whoever want to come up and just give us a rundown of what, what it all means?
Sure.
Or whoever?
Well, since we, in conjunction with the city authors, the grant, you have, I assume, some of the information was provided to you on the actual contract.
Yep, yep.
Reader's Digest version, this wasn't really publicized. The state of Iowa just kind of ran this out as part of their community catalyst grant that I was attending anyways. And I think it was last five minutes, Jim Thompson, who kind of is the head of the Iowa Downtown Resource Center, said, hey, guys, I got five minutes. I got another grant I want to talk to you, talk to you about it. And so he unveiled this four times across the state of Iowa. They put in a half a million dollars into the fund, and we're going to award five, five projects to theaters. Very similar to the community catalyst grant. They even changed the application. They didn't even change any of that because it was just, so I remember I came running back here and I said, you won't believe what I just heard today. And so that's, and then we came before you guys talked about making that application. By George, we got it. So just got the information. We were notified, because I, they do know these guys pretty well down there, that he shot me an email, must have been the day after the grants were awarded, and said, hey, just want to let you know, Jason, you guys got it up there. Three weeks later, we finally got the email, the contracts and whatever. So we kind of jumped in a little bit early there, but that's just because we were kind of pumped that that came through. So it's $100,000, it's two years to use it. What we put in the grant application is basically what an awesome jumpstart this would be for a fundraising campaign, to be able to come in and say that the state's putting in $100,000. Have no idea what you guys would want to do. That's something that you can discuss, what that number needs to be to fundraise from a, from a community and from a region. To build that scene shop would be, you know, whatever that needs to be at. I don't, I don't know that, that a number from you all is necessarily needed, but we do need to sign a contract eventually here. We have 60 days to sign a contract, to go ahead and move forward with the state of Iowa, and basically say, yeah, awesome, thanks, guys, we appreciate it, and away we go. Thought process could be any and all of the above, but you do have two phenomenal organizations, you know, CTC and CCT. And between those guys and all these smart heads that are out here, if everybody gets behind it, I got no qualms that those funds can be raised. We continue to scour the websites for more grants. Wendy's already gotten one, applied for another. We haven't heard on that one yet.
Nope, I will hear back by September on that one.
Okay.
And one thing Jason hasn't mentioned is there were five, there were five grants available. Two are already spoken for, so we literally got one of three.
I will bring that up, but pretty much you already had, had two of them already earmarked, which can't be earmarked, so you got to kind of open it all up. So, yeah, we've got three that were kind of for grabs. And ours was unique, because what they were really looking to do in what they do a lot of for the community catalyst is rehab something. It's to go in, save the exterior, and then rehab everything on the inside, and ours is gone. Ours is already gone. You guys already had made that decision, that it was not A, safe, and B, salvageable. So it was unique. We had to do a lot of wordsmithing on that application to make sure they understood that point and knew where we were at, and knew that, you know, we've got hills to climb yet, but if we could get this grant, man, what an opportunity it would be, and what a phenomenal project it would be for this community. You know, and the initial designs that are already done, just the schematics, just how it would look was enough for what they need to approve when they look through a grant. The actual, you know, blueprints and building stuff, that can come later.
They do want to see that, though?
They don't, no. They just, you do will, but they don't.
Yeah.
And, you know, they, they just want to see a cool project that, that helps Iowa in general. And we know already from this theater, you guys don't know this, just this last weekend, I mean, you got people from two, three hours away coming for performances. And to have, you know, what we basically said in the grant was to have a, have a scene shop that would allow us to do that and all kinds of more? Wow, cool. And what a return on investment that this could be for the community. I look at a lot of different stuff. You guys look at your budgets all the time. You put money into infrastructure, you can't go wrong. Can't go wrong when you do that, always look at that. But what a cool thing to actually put some money and fundraise for something that does give you a return on your investment. And that's how we do things, you know, when we sit here and look at our revolving loan funds that we do all the time. You know, we're always looking at that, just like a bank would look at that. I think this is a pretty cool project to be able to do that. So obviously, the state agreed, so I'll answer any questions, but Wendy, you go ahead and take on what I missed.
I think that so much of the community gets their start in theater and falls in love with theater from CCT. That's where I started. I, Rick Nance convinced, I think, is the right word for me to come and help with one scene in one play, Christmas Carol. I think he's kind of known for that play. He convinced me to do that. And then a couple of years later, when I got married, Dean started doing sound, and I started doing lights, and now I manage the theater. And a lot of people start with CCT and fall in love with the theater because it's got its own special magic. And I had sent pictures of the scene shop and when it had been used for black box theater, and then the shape that it was in. And we sent the safety reports. Then they saw what the possibility, the potential was. And we talked about what the scene shop afforded us and what we had lost with the scene shop. And we're, I know that the potential is there to raise the funds because we have people coming from West Des Moines for a two-hour show. We have people drive from South Dakota for a two-hour show. We have people that want to support this. We've made phone calls, Alex has made phone calls, and people are asking us, what do you need? And so if we just set up the right campaign and start making the right phone calls and sending emails, just after a show, one of the plays, somebody said, here's my information just from one of the cards Jason had made. Send me information when you need, when you start campaign fundraising. And so there is, the support is there. We just need to kickstart this project. I know the support's there. I know it's a big project and a big ask, but I know that we've got this. We just need to keep moving. The momentum, the potential is there. We've got this incredible community theater group. We've got this incredible potential, and we've got the support of the community in the surrounding areas.
Yep. While you guys talk, we're done.
I'm Paul Jensen, for those of you who don't know. I'd like to actually add a little bit to what they've said. I think one of the great things that we missed out on with the original building, just because of the type of building and the shape it was in, is it really didn't end up being as multi-use as it could have been. And I think that's something that is great to think about with a new building, where as long as we've got some things in place to be able to lock up our jewels and our supplies and things, we have another stage that could be rented out for graduation celebrations and things like that. Not to mention having the facility to be able to bring in different acts that we literally can't load in through the side of the theater. So we had a magician that had equipment. We could not have done that without having had that scene shop because the props and things won't fit in through the load-in door, which, by the way, is only accessible by stairs or a forklift. And we don't have a forklift. So, so I think one of the things important about this, not only all of the things they said about, you know, the CCT, I think, and CTC. And at some point, we should have a CTT and a TCC. But one of the great things about, about this is, yes, those two organizations do a lot to bring things into this town. Yet we had people from how many states at the last show who were also at the bed and breakfast and staying at the hotels and eating at the restaurants and commenting about this is one of the most beautiful theaters we've ever been in and having lots of fun, it gets people to come back. But it's also other things that can be done with this town as well. And we certainly can make great use of it and will make great use of this if we get this done. But I think it's also really important to thank all of the other shows that can come in through here and perhaps some of the other uses of that theater or the scene shop space for, again, it's an open area with accessible bathrooms and all sorts of things. It could be used as space for some other types of events as well, so. Any, I'll get out of the way in case anybody else wants to say anything, but, but any questions or? I've been the technical director for almost every show for the last 20 years. And so what, have a pretty good working knowledge, not only of the stage aspects of the theater, but also of trying to keep that scene shop alive as long as we could. We did a pretty good job, but eventually, there's only so much we could do. But, but certainly happy to try and address perhaps maybe theater and live performance technical aspects of how that can be helpful as well. If I was trying to worry to death.
Yeah.
Questions or anything that I can answer, otherwise I'll get out of your interest, anybody else.
All right, thank you.
So I'm Rick Nance. I've been, had the privilege of working with community theater and Cresco Theater Commission for about 25 years on theater commission, 40 years working with theater and performance. And we have an absolute jewel here. It is one of the last theaters built as an opera house that also doubled as a music theater. The people you see sitting out here have got more DNA left in that building than you could possibly imagine. We've always joked, if there were a murder in there sometime, we'd be prime suspects because there's not an inch of that building where we haven't bled over, scraped over, cut over, or had things dropped on us. We won't go into that detail, okay? But one thing I think we miss sometimes is the importance of the arts to an entire community. How many times when someone is looking to open a business or move to a town, the first things they say are, what are your education systems like? What have you got to offering schooling for my kids? And what are the artistic opportunities around for recreation and participation? My daughter is a performing artist. She is on the faculty of Southern Methodist University in the art program. She is going to work for NASA for the next three weeks in Arizona because they're expanding their program from STEM to STEAM. They have realized the importance of having a working artist as NASA develops their programs. And she's been told, you develop an artistic approach to what we are doing with the science and math and engineering. You've got free rein to go ahead and do that. That is the importance on a national and an international level that we're getting for the arts. And it's just as important for our little community to start realizing that factor that we have. And it's a great time. When you talk about teens and how to learn and how to teach young kids to do stuff, it happens without a ball sometime. And we want to be contributing to that. Thank you.
My name is Jane Jensen, and I'm the vice president of CCT. And I just wanted to let you know some of the things that CCT has done for the opera house, not only just the scene shop, but for the opera house itself, so that you are aware that we can raise money, we can do projects, and we can follow them through. I did make copies, if you'd like to see them, but I would like to just run down a few things that we have contributed to the opera house itself. The light board, the overhead stage lights, the lights on the trees and the balconies, the wiring, the control boxes on both sides of the stage, in the lobby and in the light booth, all belong to CCT and were installed by them. To replace them would be upwards of $30,000. We found the trap door so you can get underneath the balcony, and we fixed the under balcony lights. We had a child crawl in there, but anyway, we fixed. While wiring the control boxes, we found live open wires unexpectedly, and we fixed those. We did not fix them. We hired an electrician to fix those. All overhead lights were replaced and brought up to code, which included setting up scaffolding to reach the chandeliers. We also paid an electrician to completely rewire the box in the stage right wing and to bring it up to code and install a 220 outlet. The original scene shop building was purchased by CCT, renovated, and connected to the opera house through the overhead door. House through the overhead door. Numerous times, we painted the stage floor to keep it looking as good as possible and we finally replaced the entire floor at our cost. In the orchestra pit, for many years before CTC was a real viable entity, we were considered responsible for everything from the orchestra pit to the south wall. And so we installed outlets, microphone jacks under the stage floor in the pit and wired it for monitors, electricity and microphones. When the remodel was done inside the Opera House, we donated and installed all the new bulbs around the proscenium. This list goes on and on and on. And I, like I said, I did make copies in case you want to see it. Basically, I just want you to know, we are here, we want to help, we want to make this happen. We miss our Scene Shop. It is so difficult to build good sets and get them out on that stage when we want to have other things happening in that, on that stage. We lucked out this summer that they closed down the theater for the fair and then let us have it for the rest of the time that we needed it. That doesn't always happen. We want to do good shows. We want to do better shows. We'd love to do shows, black box theater in the Scene Shop. We want to bring those people in. I want to reiterate, we brought people in from Colorado and Chicago for this show and they were blown away. So please, please consider our help and what we can do to help you make this real. Thank you.
Thank you.
Dean Mike Daggett, of course, and Wendy Seussman, who is the manager of the theater, and just want to say that we have something very rare, that people, like everybody's talked about, have come to see, you know, time and time again. Remember how many years ago we had a theme here for Red Pride? Put that on the map for us. I mean, we really do have something that people cherish. We've just got to work together, keep this thing going. That's all I have to say.
You had a flyer that went out at the last show, correct? For the fundraising? And it's kind of early, I suppose, for that, anything to happen with that yet.
That flyer did not ask for a dime.
Oh, it didn't? Oh, okay, you're right.
That flyer asked if you'd like to be a part.
Oh, sure, sure, sure. Okay, all right.
Let us know who you are.
Yeah.
Just like they said, you know, probably 75% of that audience, we know who they were. We can find them.
Yeah.
But I sure didn't want to miss 25% that came from Chicago that we have no idea how to get in touch with.
Right.
So we weren't ready for it. We're not ready for tomorrow.
Yeah.
All these entities that we're talking about, we need to get together.
Right.
We need to meet. We need to talk. We need to strategize.
Yeah.
But I sure didn't want to miss that guy from Chicago that went, man, I had 10 grand I didn't know what to do with. We'll call you, man.
Right, right. So those people that come from that far away, do they find out about it on Facebook or how does, is there a mailing list or?
With my live shows, every time I schedule a live show, it emails everybody on my email list.
Okay, and people can sign up at every show?
Every time you buy a ticket, it saves your information. And then I still have the flyers that Jason made sitting there. So anytime you come in for a movie or buy popcorn, you can fill it out.
Yeah.
And I just ask people to leave them there. So I have two more live shows booked out in September and one in October that I have a contract on my desk.
Right.
And CCT has a very lively Facebook page. It goes on all...
And connects with other community theater and things like that. We go see shows elsewhere.
Right.
People come here.
Right, right.
The one thing, the one thing I would comment on that, I guess, I've been fortunate to be a part of the commission, CCT, now on the council, is aside from everything that they said, the one thing that the council's always minding and watching is budget. How do we make this work? How do we make that work? 2013, 14? The city took over management of the theater. Prior to that, there was one show a year done by CCT, maybe two shows, a musical and a play, or, and then possibly black box theater. But aside from that, there were, there was other performing groups that would come in like Avenue Two, or there would be, you know, maybe an outside band from the area that was familiar with it that would come in. You look at the amount of live shows that we now have coming into our community, our live shows are staggering, how many we have now per month, per year. And realistically, going back to that budgetary number, what we make off of them. Not only are we making money for our community people, whether it's hotels, whether it's restaurants, whether it's groceries or whatever it may be, our community theater, the money is going back to the taxpayers in the form of profit from how it's staffed, how it's ran. And it's being ran extremely efficient. Our commission members help out, CCT helps out, volunteers from the community people, they started up Friends of the Theater now that is coming about, that is a volunteer group that's core, I mean, it's old commission members and their, and their husbands for the most part or wives, but they're coming in to help out as well to help offset some of those costs. And that's something that we didn't have a grasp on in 2014 that was possible. And we came into this going, is this going to make us money? Because at that point in time, we weren't even making enough money off the rent in order to cover the utilities. Now we have it managed by the city. We're running tons of shows and programs through there. And that's something that I think sometimes we lose focus of compared to where we were at. And when you look at the projects that we've had between the interior remodeling, the lobby remodeling that the commission and CCT did, the marquee, the, everything, taking down the Scene Shop obviously was a very difficult decision to make, but given it's the nature of the building and the safety of the building, it was needed. But I know for a fact we have lost out on shows because they can't load in. You can't pick up a baby grand piano and sling it over a railing. Well, I guess it depends on how confident you are. Nate, Nate would just, you know, throw it on his back and climb it up. But that's something that we're missing out on. And as Rick said, it doesn't always start with a ball, but people need a community outlet. And realistically, our civic center, if you want to call it that, in our community spans far wider than just Cresco. You know, it's Decorah, it's Riceville, it's, you know, New Hampton. It's all over. It brings people from all over to come here to participate in that. And that's something that, as we look at this project, that's something to keep in mind because it's not just Cresco, but it's bringing people into our community to see what we have to offer. So.
I noticed in the grant itself, there was a line in there that said that either party at any time could stop and cancel the agreement. So is that in every grant from Iowa?
Yep.
Have you ever seen them do that?
State?
Yeah.
The money's already allocated.
Yeah.
Unless, now you want to have it in there, the sky falls.
Yeah, yeah.
Something pulls in, you pull out.
And once, and we have a two-year window to complete the project with that grant?
Yeah, you got two years really to make your first draw. So just like I talked about with the brewery, if we could have made a draw before the expiration date, they give you an automatic extension. You just got to be doing the project. But if you haven't started it, that's pretty tough to ask for an extension.
Right.
So, you know, again, I don't want to, I'd be just spitballing here to throw timelines out, but, you know, these groups need to get together and talk and decide all that. But there's time to get together to do that. There is time to fundraise. There is time to then plan for a building project and to build it within two years. So.
So it has to be completed within two years, do you feel?
Like I said, if you start it.
Maybe, yeah.
Then they give you an automatic extension.
Okay.
I would say the intent is to finish in two years.
Right.
But we could get an extension if needed.
But you, you know, they, they like two draws. They want money transferred twice.
Yes.
When you...
60 and 40, I think.
When you spent $60,000, then you ask for the 60, they ship you 60, and then they want the last 40 when they're scheduling when to bring the governor up here for her picture.
And we can't use that for any past expenses? I believe I read in there.
Correct.
Yeah.
Nope.
Okay.
I know this is way premature, but what kind of money do we think we could fundraise on a project like that? I mean...
You guys can say for yourself, but I would hate to put a limit on it, Gary. I would hate to put a limit on it. So even say that you've got an estimate right now of a building around 600 something, throw it out there. I don't know. Could you, could you fundraise seven, eight? I think you might be able to. I wouldn't put a, put a limit on it right now. I think, again, parties that be need to get together to discuss how that looks and what it looks like and then move forward. And there are friends of this theater all over the nation, all over the nation. I mean, you know, hey, I always go back to Bobby Stoops throwing 10 grand at the school for new uniforms for the band.
Yeah.
Who knew? Well, the light made a little ploy. We just need about, you know, 10 of those, we good.
Yeah. Another 90.
Yeah.
Just decided no...
We got $100,000 out of the whole state. We won one of five $100,000 grants. And Jason called me and I couldn't believe it when he told me because we were cautiously optimistic, but it's kind of insane to even think that we won that.
When we raised the original money for the Scene Shop, it was before Facebook, it was before anything. And just basically from this community alone, and I remember making, doing cold phone calls with the phone book, just going out A, B, C, hi, just looking for some money, $75, whatever, just in this community at that time. And what year was that? 2007? 2008? Seven?
Something like that.
We raised over $80,000.
We used the George Champlin method, just button hold everybody to seat.
Yeah.
For a smaller property.
Right.
Undoubtedly, what we knew was it was a smaller property.
Exactly.
Still important, not as big.
It's, it's a lot different today, how you can get out there and get to the people.
Oh, definitely, yeah. Yeah.
And we didn't need any more than that.
Right.
I mean, that's what we needed to purchase the property.
Yeah. Any other questions, comments?
Thank you.
All right. All right.
Thank you.
Thank you. Next, resolution authorizing the mayor to sign a Community Catalyst Building Remediation Grant Agreement with the Iowa Economic Development Authority for the Cresco Theater Scene Shop. I make the motion.
I'll second it. McConnell?
Yes.
Fortune?
Yes.
Carmen?
Yes.
Kreener?
Hugos Group?
Yep.
Busco?
Yes.
Okay. Motion, Gary?
So I would definitely need to know how, because if they're going to be fundraising, we're going to have to put the money upfront. Do you guys want to use lost until the funds come in?
What would be the next expenses then?
Definitely the architect.
Well, we have, we have phase two paid for.
That's what I was thinking.
And then that included, I'd have to go back through the list, but that included, I think it included bed letting, or bed letting. Bedwetting.
Bedwetting.
Bed letting.
Bed letting.
Um, just trying to go back through the...
It's just the letters in the alphabet?
Yeah, no big deal. I do math, not letters.
I don't think we've been built for phase two yet.
Okay. Because we, well, we had to because they wouldn't do any changes until, until we had done that. Because we had construction changes as far as staircases and doors that needed to be addressed.
I was thinking I saw the amount of $40,000 somewhere.
Yeah.
So far, we've had Martin Gardner for, there's a $3,300, a $650 and a $2,600 one.
We signed the agreement. We haven't had to pay them anything else.
Right.
Okay. So they did the work then and we owe them or not necessarily?
We haven't had to pay them anything else since you signed that agreement. I have.
So there will be another bill coming. Their estimate for phase two, I think, was $60,000.
Yeah, and that, that included bid letting, possible bedwetting, but...
So that's not done, you don't think, then?
The bid, the bid letting and all of that, they hadn't done anything with that until they heard from us on the, on the Community Catalyst Grant. So, because we pretty much had told them at the time that we, this, the project was hanging on this.
Right.
They didn't want to do anything until we knew we had it. So.
So that grant can then be used for that?
Once you guys sign it, then we can start expensing things.
I have one question. I probably should have asked this earlier. You know, that your building cost is here, we're two years away, obviously before the thing is constructed. And we ran into some of these cost overruns and bidding issues. How solid is this building cost so that we don't wake up with a surprise and say, oh, we missed that by?
There's a contingency in there.
That's in this figure?
Yes.
I hope it's way high, their estimate.
Yeah, 10% ain't nothing to me.
Because you can buy two houses for about $600, $700,000, new ones.
Yeah.
I would hope this is way high.
Contingency is about $80,000.
I think lovers come down and concrete's going to...
Because that was just estimated, again, in the last six months?
Yeah.
In March.
Yeah.
So we've seen what our bids did with some of the stuff we just got done with, and I don't foresee any concrete building materials.
And the only nice part about that is with the bid letting process, if I'm understanding it correctly, once we accept the bid, that's locked in and they can't come back and say, well, price of concrete went up 30%, so we have to charge you 30% more. Once it's, once it's let and they've agreed to the price and we accept the bid, that's We could talk to...
But that just encourages them to bid high.
That's true. We could talk to Martin Gardner and have them come in and speak to the council. There's, I don't, I don't foresee that being a problem. We did that in the very beginning, I believe, with Brian Stark.
Yeah.
Yeah, because that was during COVID time.
So that being said, do we go put out for bids first or do we get the money fundraised first?
We have a meeting and then we start fundraising and then after them.
So we should all get together, maybe?
I don't know.
The more the merrier, I would say. Again, I think I envisioned CCT and CTC try to get together to have a joint meeting. And I'm talking to you guys for the first time, so I apologize.
No, that's absolutely, whoever needs to be there.
To have that, that joint meeting and if council wants to be a part of that, wonderful, great, or two of you, you know, whatever. Strategize how that fundraising goes. I think you're getting ahead of yourself if you want to start talking about letting that out, you know?
Yeah.
I think you've got time. Theoretically, you would get together here now in this fall and you'd do a bid letting come December, you know, first of the year. That's when you'd normally want a bid out there. Maybe they're a little bit slower. And if things were going awesome, you were breaking ground come spring or summer. And you got a year's worth of construction, you got six months to boot in the backend of that, not even worried about it. So I think you got some time to do that, but I don't know that to get too many carts in front of the horses here.
Right.
Until, until a meeting of the minds came together with everybody that's invested, probably, probably not where we're at right now. But the biggest thing was, we need you guys and thank you very much to be on board with this and to work with us and, and work with state and take their money.
And that's the federal, federal money? Is that the...
It's state money.
Okay, because I think Michelle and I were, wasn't Michelle and I were talking about it, it was you and I, and somebody said it was federal.
It comes from the CDBG funds.
It does, okay.
Union Development Block, this is where that, all those funds come. That's the only discretionary funds that Iowa Economic Development gets to kind of play with.
So if we have a meeting, I don't know who all wants to join.
So right now, from the council, it's Jan and I that, that are sitting on the committee meeting for the Scene Shop.
Sure.
But I think it would be wise personally, just, and correct me if I'm wrong, but I think getting Brian Stark up here to discuss the plans, the next phase and what we're doing in a public forum where we have the entire council, so everyone's aware of it, have members from CCT and the Theater Commission here as well at the same point in time so that everyone can be on board. so that everyone can be on the same page, know where we stand financially, know where we're, where we're going financially. We have numbers that we can use, but to have everybody on the same page as to how the rest of this process will work, I think could be beneficial to not only the Council, but the community as well.
Would you want that as a separate work session, do you think, or just at a normal meeting?
Whether we did a work session or a normal meeting, it would depend on how, how much we had packed for the, the main agenda.
Right. Our next meeting is in one week or two weeks?
Hmm, August seventh, or two?
And of course, it would be Brian's availability to kind of speak to the Council too, but.
Right. And yeah, that's, 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 that's a great idea too, so, um, maybe we can reach out and see if August seventh works.
I, I can reach out to him, uh, tonight and then see if I get an email back, you know, and then we can go from there. And then I can let everyone else know from there.
And I guess we can see maybe what the agenda's going to be like next meeting and either have it as part of the meeting or, uh, separate work sessions, so.
From a fundraising standpoint, that'll be pretty important. We kind of have to be able to put out there where, where we're going and what the, what the plan is and the current cost.
Yeah.
We certainly have people we can call and say, hey, we're, we're raising money for this, send this. If you want some, here you go.
Yeah.
But other people are going to need something a little more concrete, so that will be in.
Anybody else in the Council, does that sound like a good idea, any other ideas, thoughts?
The more information, the better.
Yeah. Amy?
I'll be gone that week.
Oh.
But no, I think it's a great idea. Because you can't sell something without pictures.
Yeah.
Very pretty pictures.
So do you guys want to wait to decide where to pay it out of then? I mean, we're working on a budget amendment now, so.
Well, there was a listing of where we've got funds available. In the packet, fifty-five thousand from the trust, twenty-nine thousand available in projects. Thirty thousand in the trust, that must be somebody else's trust in CUSB.
That was a, that was a donation that was given to the Commission on behalf of CUSB for. The, the two fourteen is, if I'm understanding that correctly, that's everything that we have gotten currently for.
Correct.
Right. Well, we haven't received the hundred thousand, and what you're asking is.
Yep, so the, where is it? The four forty-eight, six, four hundred and fifty thousand dollars, basically. We'll need to upfront the cost pending any donations that come in.
So it's upfront cost to us, but then the donations come back.
Offset it.
Offset it to us.
I mean, we won't.
Need that for a while.
Yeah, we won't need that for a while, and hopefully, you know, we can get some donations.
Get some donations.
In the meantime, and working from the, the funds that we've got, I guess, I'm wondering, I, I don't see what we would have to decide right now. If, if the fundraising fails, then, which we certainly hope it won't, um, then we've got a bigger problem because we don't have money sitting around to cover the four hundred and forty-eight thousand dollars. But I guess I'm, I, I don't understand what the question is.
Well, whether we pull it out of the general fund or lost to cover that four hundred and forty-eight thousand.
These things that, that were identified.
The four hundred and forty-eight are after. This is, we're talking about that, that amount, what we would pay that amount at. Because we're already, the total project is six hundred and sixty-three thousand.
If they get the funds coming in, it.
Offsets some of the.
Fundraising.
No, no, absolutely.
Are you saying that you wouldn't get it until after it's completed? No.
Absolutely.
You would start coming in and.
Yeah, that's.
I'm with you, Amy. The rest of us are with you. I, I, you know, I don't think you're, unless you're asking them.
Well, I know when they did, they're doing the Civic Center right now, they're doing like a three-year pledge. So you could pledge, say, three thousand and break it into three years. So you might have to upfront some of the cost until the rest of those pledges come in.
And see, that has not been decided at all.
Yeah, we need to.
That has not even been discussed. So to figure out where you're coming up with five hundred thousand dollars today, and no one's asking you to do that. This group needs to meet to figure out how to fundraise. If they fundraise and they fundraise, and we're looking really good, and you're at whatever that number needs to be, eighty-five percent, by December one, yeah, let's go, let's figure out how we're going to do that, drop that money in that account, and let's start rolling and put some bid lettings out there. But as of right now, I don't think you need to figure out where you're coming up with four hundred. The bigger problem that you said, go ahead and say it. If we fall flat on our face fundraising, yeah, we might call the state back. And go, you know what, maybe we're not in. Maybe we oversold this thing. I don't anticipate that, but that's your fallback. You don't have a risk.
Yeah, I, I'm willing to give them, you know, if, I take your point, because the hospital's doing it, the, the three-year pledges. And sometimes that's really handy for tax purposes and stuff for your donors. I understand that if, if that's the case, we'll have to discuss where we pull it from, but I, I, I don't think we need to make that decision tonight.
Was your question?
You know me, I'm always looking for where's the money coming from, but.
Was your question not for the whole building, but for just a small portion right now?
Michelle says that she thought that we'd have to decide where the whole thing would come to, so that way, and you're going to have the expense coming out of there.
Okay.
So, but, I mean, we can wait, we'll probably do another.
I think we have to believe until shown otherwise that, that the donations will fall into one of these accounts, the trust and something, and then we draw out of that.
Right.
I mean, there will come a time, hopefully not, but maybe that there's a hundred thousand dollars short, and then we have a big decision about where does the hundred thousand come from. Or if there's all of the pledges come in in three-year tranches, then, then we got to fund it.
Any other questions or comments on that? All right, thank you, everyone. Uh, next on the agenda.
Thank you very much for your enthusiasm.
Discuss new website and posting of Council packets. So last, last meeting, uh, there was an issue with possibly an issue with the posting of the packets.
Yep, so by posting the packets, the packet portion is not ADA compliant. Um, I think a couple of you said that you guys preferred the packets out there.
I do.
I do.
So as long as you guys are aware that it could be a potential.
I guess I don't understand, because in the agenda, you also post the tax levy pages that are clearly PDF from someplace else. Why is that okay? But it's not okay to have a PDF of, of the same thing in the packet.
I think it's the volume of the PDFs.
It's not, but you need to limit the number of PDFs. PDFs, um, that you need to only use them when necessary. So, like, you should use the text when you can, so like the minutes and whatnot. And when they have a chart, use that as a PDF. There's no, so like when you have minutes, use that. And then when you need a chart or whatever, use that as a PDF. So then the page can read it, read the minutes, and then when it gets to the chart, that's there. So that we're, we're eliminating as much as possible.
Because it automatically reads the words, correct?
Correct.
But if you put a pie gra, a pie chart up there or graph, it may not read that correct.
Correct. So we're eliminating as much as possible.
So what are all the other websites doing that have pie graphs and stuff, they're not compliant either?
It just, it'll skip those.
I mean, because for instance, you look at Decorah, they have budget stuff up that's, um, I think it's Decorah. It's actually pretty nice. I really liked it.
They sent, um, Decorah was one of the websites that we sent that we liked. Because we, um, they ask you for three or four sites that you like.
Yeah.
And so I went through and found a bunch of city websites that, and I asked me and Nikki and Michelle, and they pulled Decorah as well and said, like.
I guess the other thing that bothers me is, though, I assume we're not the only, the Council isn't the only people reading the packets. I mean, there's a lot of information in the packets. So if we take the packets down, there's less transparency to the residents of the community for the sake of, e- even to the people who require ADA assistance, because we don't want to have something that can't be read. Well, taking it down makes everything not read.
Right.
You're not even giving them a chance.
We can have a link with the information there, like, so it'll link, and the packet will be there, but it'll be text except for your pie chart or what, and that.
Isn't that what we have on the beta site now? It's a link that you click on.
It's, but it's a PDF. We're talking about link, having it as text, not PDF. I know it's not your favorite, but it, we're trying to eliminate PDFs as much as we can. Or if you, if you want the PDFs there, I'm just going to go with PDF.
I mean, I'm open to alternatives personally, but I would like to see the packet there, and I think the residents would like to see the packet there too.
Yeah.
In some form, however that's done.
Yeah, that's my, I mean, we'll just, we can leave it up there, that'll just, that part will just not be ADA compliant.
Is it harder to update?
I have not seen how to update it yet. Have you?
No, until we get it launched, I won't get trained on it. Like, it's ready to go, and then I'll, like, if I tell her tomorrow, she'll launch it, and then I'll schedule time to get trained on it.
Please don't do that until you fix the things that I told you about.
I'm going to tell her to, I have to send her an email. I was out, definitely to.
Because there are some links that don't work and.
Yeah, well, no, some of the links won't work till it's uploaded. Um, but I had your, I'll just scan it to her, and I can send it to her, then ask her to fix certain those, and tell her we want to be in the packets.
At least the links should work.
Yeah. Any other?
We're just seeing the trial thing, that's what our trial ends.
Any other questions or comments on the new website? If not, it'll go live soon.
Um, I think Michelle wants the motion to, go ahead with it.
So go ahead and, and.
Go live with the.
Go live with the new website, including posting the packets, the motion.
I'll make the motion, subject to correcting some of the things that we identified.
The website, I'll second it.
Okay. Kreener?
Yes.
McConnell?
Yes.
Buska?
Yes.
Carmen?
Yes.
Uh, last item on the agenda, number six, update on CDBG Housing Rehab Grant Program.
Uh, Michelle just wanted to update that the last claim, um, is included in the list of claims for the last house. And Melanie with Simmering Corry is filing the last reimbursement this week with the state. And that closes everything out. After the state closes out, we will have an audit on it as well.
Okay.
And I just want to comment that Simmering and Corry saved our buns on this one after Upper Explorer Land kind of stood us up and almost made us lose the money. And so kudos to them. They got paid for it, but I'm guessing not nearly as much as they should have.
Sure. Sure. And no motions, or anything to be made there, right? Um, that was the last thing on the agenda. Somebody wants to make a motion to adjourn?
Second.
Carmen?
Yes.
Buska?
Yes.
Fortune?
Yes.
McConnell?
Yes.
Being adjourned.